I'm pleased to welcome the committee members and guests to the committee on Student Affairs. Everyone should have some form of electronic device, either a laptop, an iPad, and iPhone, to access the agenda and other supporting documents for this meeting. There are ten copies of the agenda and supporting documents on the table. I suspect that it's already been distributed.
Yes.
There are six action items this evening, one information item, and one student disciplinary appeal before this committee. Our action, may I have the approval of the minutes of our last meeting? The motion to approve the minutes of meeting of April eighth, 2013.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The minutes are approved. I now would like to, action item B, approval of the CUNY School of Law Auxiliary Enterprise Board. And I'm going to call on Vice Chancellor Frank Sanchez, who will now provide an overview of the CUNY School of Law Auxiliary Services Enterprise.
Thank you, Chair Priscilli. This is a proposed resolution on the establishment of Auxiliary Enterprise Board at CUNY School of Law. Resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the establishment of the CUNY School of Law Justice and Auxiliary Services Corporation and the proposed bylaws and certificate of incorporation of the Auxiliary Enterprise Board. The explanation is the CUNY School of Law would like to incorporate an Auxiliary Enterprise Board to support the school and assist in implementation of its public service mission. In accordance with Board Bylaws Section sixteen point one zero, the bylaws and certificate of incorporation of the Auxiliary Enterprise Board have been approved by the Dean of the Law School and reviewed by the University Office of the General Counsel. The name of the Auxiliary Enterprise Board is CUNY School of Law Justice and Auxiliary Services Corporation. The Auxiliary Enterprise Board will be responsible for auxiliary services that may include food services, bookstore operations, vending and game machines, and other enterprises for the benefit of the school. In addition, the Auxiliary Enterprise Board will conduct and/or support public service initiatives that may include research, publication, training, and distribution of materials which address legal issues relating to advancing justice and to disseminate the results of the same to members of the general public, the academic community, community organizations, and government. The governing board of the Auxiliary Enterprise Board will be composed of the Dean of Law School or her designee as chair, five students, four administrators, and one faculty member. Chair Priscilli, this is the proposed resolution on establishment of the Auxiliary Enterprise Board at the CUNY School of Law.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor. May I have a motion to approve? Can I have a second? Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Approved. We'll now go on to the approval of the Stella and Charles Gutman Community College Auxiliary Enterprise Board. Vice Chancellor Frank Sanchez again will now provide an overview of the Stella and Charles Gutman Community College Auxiliary Services Board.
Thank you, Chair Priscilli. The resolution that was just passed, this is a proposed resolution on establishment of Auxiliary Board, Enterprise Board at the Stella and Charles Gutman Community College. Resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the establishment of the Stella and Charles Gutman Community College Auxiliary Enterprises Corporation and the proposed bylaws and certificate of incorporation of the Auxiliary Enterprise Board. The explanation is that the Stella and Charles Gutman Community College would like to incorporate an Auxiliary Enterprise Board to support the college. In accordance with Board Bylaws Section sixteen point ten, the bylaws and certificate of incorporation of the Auxiliary Enterprise Board have been approved by the college president and reviewed by the University Office of the General Counsel. The name of the Auxiliary Enterprise Board is the Stella and Charles Community College Auxiliary Enterprises Corporation. The Auxiliary Enterprise Board will be responsible for the auxiliary services that may include food services, bookstore operations, vending and gaming, game machines, and other enterprises for the benefit of the school. The governing board of the Auxiliary Enterprise Board will be composed of the college president or his designee as chair, six students, three administrators, and three faculty members. Chair Priscilli, this is the proposed resolution on the establishment of the Auxiliary Enterprise Board at the Stella and Charles Gutman Community College.
Very well, thank you. May I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
That motion?
Second.
Thank you.
Question? And I haven't had a chance to read through the certificate of incorporation, but I'm assuming that there is a viable process in place that allows for students to be selected and rotated through. Can somebody just make me aware of that?
Yes, I believe so. We have representatives of community colleges.
I can speak to that. I'm Jane Davis from the General Counsel's Office.
Okay, thank you.
And the CUNY Board of Trustees bylaws speak to what the composition of every auxiliary enterprise corporation needs to be, and that includes the student component. And they're made up of student governance individuals or people who are elected by the students, and that they typically serve a term of one year and then they're reelected or reappointed.
Okay, good. So they're selected by the students, and the students have input into this?
Definitely.
And then there's a rotation, so they're not on there for the full four years that they're in school?
Only if someone happened to be the student government president for the all four years, which is unlikely, but that's one situation where someone might, yes.
Thank you, thank you very much. Then this is my question.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? That, too, is approved. I'd now like to call on Vice Chancellor Frank Sanchez to provide an overview of the Queens College Auxiliary.
So, trustee Priscilli, this is the proposed resolution on establishment of the Auxiliary Enterprise Corporation at Queens College. This is a little bit different than the previous two in that Queens College is restructuring its Auxiliary Enterprise Board from an unincorporated association to a corporation. In accordance with Board Bylaws Section sixteen point ten, the bylaws and certificate of incorporation of the Auxiliary Enterprise Board have been approved by the Queens College president and reviewed by the University's Office General Counsel. The name of the Auxiliary Enterprise Board is the Queens College Auxiliary Enterprises Corporation. The Auxiliary Enterprise Board will be responsible for auxiliary enterprises at the college that may include food services, bookstore operations, vending, and game machines, and other enterprises for the benefit of the college community. The governing board of the Auxiliary Enterprise Board will be composed of the Queens College president or designee as president, six students, four administrators, and two faculty members, as well as the executive director of the Queens College Student Services Corporation, who shall serve as an ex officio, non-voting member of the board. This is the proposed resolution for the restructuring or establishment of the Auxiliary Enterprise Corporation at Queens College.
Very good. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
I have a question. The, what is the, two questions. One, what is the relationship of this board to the Student Union Board?
They are, Merrill Canard for Queens College.
Aye.
Could you approach the table, please?
Please approach.
They are separate organizations, though there is some cooperation in terms of the use of the monies that are gained by the auxiliary enterprises, and there's a cooperative relationship in terms of how money is portioned, and some financial arrangements that are made to put things in account so that they're accessible and usable by the student services. They are separate entities, separately incorporated.
Is there, given that point, is there any possibility that there would be a conflict between the rulings of the Student Union Board and Auxiliary Board? And if that's the case, then is there a process to reconcile those differences so that they're not ruling upon the same issues? Because I'm looking at what the Auxiliary Board is responsible for, and I'm just wondering, because many of these items, I believe, are in the Student Union, are they not?
Well, the funds that are, that come to the, you mean that the actual facilities?
Well, yeah, yeah, I'm looking at, I mean, like vending machines, gaming, I mean, some of the things that the Auxiliary Board is responsible for, and so I'm just wondering, is there any conflict between what this board is responsible for and what the Student Union Board is responsible for, given that my, as I look at it, prima facie, they're in the same building, are they not? And so I'm just wondering, what is the process for reconciling any differences so that you don't have two groups ruling upon the same items? I was a member, when I was a student, of the first Student Union Board. You know, I was responsible at that time for student allocation of space, and so I know very well what's in that building, and so with this new board being coming about, I'm just wondering about the relationship.
Yeah, well, I guess my best answer to that is that they are completely separate budgets and monetary flow, so they are not responsible, it's not as if there are two entities that run the bookstore, two entities that make the contractual arrangements for the use of space. This one is the organization that's responsible for the use of space. I will say that the Student Services Corporation, as we explore our entities at Queens College and refine them, which is what this is about, why exactly it was an association for so long is something that I'm afraid neither I'm nor Jane Davis are able to explain. It's not the best organization. The Student Services Corporation came into being because it was a completely, it was not a DASNY-owned building at the time, and it needed to have a completely separate financial arrangement, that whether there need to be some other looks at that organization and how that should be structured is something that we are looking at as well, but in terms of conflict, I'll point out that this very same budget system has been in place, albeit in the wrong form and association, but there, it never presented itself because the budgets are completely separate and the space and the use of it is completely.
Just one other point from Madam Chair. Is there, is there therefore a possibility that you could have an ex officio member, you know, from each of those groups to the other? What I'm concerned about is communication, and what I'm concerned about is individuals not ruling and making decisions off of one and then trying to play turf battles, you know, and that we have a smooth flow of communication and information sharing, so that way they're.
You're suggesting the reverse be true, that on the Student Services Corporation, there'd be, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I can certainly assure you that I am on both boards, if that's of any comfort, but I can also make sure that we have the reciprocal relationship with the ex officio member.
And maybe that a student would be involved. I think, I'm glad that you're on both boards because I respect that, but also having a student view would be beneficial, I believe, as an ex officio. I don't know, it's just something, I don't want to complicate the process, what I'm just trying to do is to have a smooth communication.
Yeah, yeah. I appreciate that, and we'll implement something to be sure that that occurs.
Okay, let the manager reflect that?
Yes, and I also have one question for you. Is there any co-mingling of funds between the two entities for any particular event?
There's no co-mingling of funds, but I am aware that there have been occasions on which the Student Services Corporation or vice versa have agreed to place monies from one entity in an account for the other, after the motion concerning a desired use, for example, an enhancement of Student Union recently to increase rental income, was coming from one fund, and the other entity agreed to that that was an appropriate use of their funds in order for the betterment of the, but it's not a co-mingling, no.
Okay, good. Any other questions, anyone?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Abstentions? So approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Vice Chancellor Frank Sanchez is now going to provide an overview of the Queens, oh, you did, I'm sorry, you did that already. We got so involved.
Do you want him to do it again?
Yeah, let's do it again. The approval of City College of New York Center for Worker Education, which is known as CWE, substitute student activity fee. Again, Vice Chancellor Frank Sanchez will now provide an overview of the City College for Worker Education substitute student activity fee.
Great, thank you. This proposed resolution is on a substitute student activity fee for all City College students enrolled in the Center for Worker Education, referred to as CWE. Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves a substitute student activity fee for all CWE students each semester and summer session. Resolved that the CWE students at the Center for Worker Education be exempt from the sixty-four dollars and thirty-five cents student activity fee paid by full-time undergraduate students and the forty dollars and eighty-five cents student activity fee paid by part-time undergraduate students, and instead be charged a substitute student activity fee of five dollars and eighty-five cents for all CWE students each semester and summer session. The Center for Worker Education students attend classes at an off-campus site and miss many of the opportunities to participate in student activities that occur on the main campus. The college has asked that these students pay a substitute fee that will be used to support activities at this off-campus site. We also have a representative from CCNY, should there be any questions?
Are there any questions?
Yes, what's the impact? Well, I guess we have to approve the resolution before we can have discussion.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I have a second to that? Second. Any discussion?
Yes. The, what's the impact of this on the, you said that the students are, they attend off-site, off-campus, can you just, or you're gonna be, can you just explain?
Wendy.
Hi, how are you?
I'm well. The impact, can you repeat your question?
Yeah, what I'm wondering is, what is the impact? Is there a negative impact as a result of this on students in any way?
No, not at all. Right now, it's the fee historically that has been the fee, and we've provided services, but they're limited because, as we know, CWE students are there from like four-thirty into the evening. Most of those students are coming from work, so they don't have a lot of time to participate in our weekend or weekday activities, so we actually take activities down to that.
Okay. And where is it located?
All the way down by.
Twenty-five Broadway.
Broadway, yes, all the way downtown.
Yeah, that's pretty.
That's ways.
But standing on the ferry.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I have a question. I just want to know if the student government and the city judge was consulted with this resolution before it was presented?
Yes. Our vice president consulted with them, yes, they did.
And they agreed?
Yes.
Okay.
And, you know, the fees they'll be paying, would that be sufficient to provide them with, you know, with activities?
It has been sufficient to this point yet.
You're going to give them a refund?
It has been sufficient, again, their time span is so small, you know, when we can actually interact with them, so we try our best to provide them with, you know, particular services that we know they would need, and we also have someone that's stationed down there to work with them from Student Affairs now.
Oh, that's good, that's important.
Yes.
I have another question from me. The activity fees that is currently, we're gonna request them to be exempt from, isn't that the same activity fees that's earmarked to go to other different entity in the, on the actual campus?
Yes.
So by exempting those students, don't you think that the services that are being provided to the general population of students is gonna have a lack of funding into those different areas?
No, because right now, we actually provide them, the five dollars and eighty-five cents that they pay, eighty-five cents, USS, and then the five dollars we use to actually provide services that are appropriate for the CWE population, because it's a little different. They're more non-traditional age students, as I said, they're full-time workers, so they're going straight from work to, brought, you know, down to CWE to take classes, so they have very little opportunity, and hence that's why we've actually provided a human body down at CWE so that we can sort of address some of the issues that may come up. But as far as, I can tell I've been around for a little while, the services we've been providing have worked out fine.
Okay. The reason why I'm concerned is because I know some of the money goes toward, like at some school, not at all school, but it goes to childcare center, and I'm sure that's something they might maybe need to benefit from, but if you take away that money from the general population, it's gonna affect that budget as well for everybody, so I'm just a little concerned with it.
Well, truly, actually, the five dollars that we get, I think it amounts to something like three thousand, it's a very small amount. We're very strategic about what we do for CWE and pertaining to CWE students. So their five dollars that they pay actually goes towards.
I have a question.
Yes.
Out of the population of CCNY students, what is the percentage of CWE students that you have?
Oh, that's a good question, I don't have the exact number, but it's not a huge population.
Just order back to, it's a good question.
Yeah, it is, it's a very good question.
Oh, we're talking twenty-five, fifty?
No, we're probably talking more like a hundred and change.
Out of all those students?
Out of all of our, yes, it's a small population, it's a very small population.
Okay. I'm a mad guy, I was trying to do the calculation, because if you said we're gonna have about three thousand with those five dollars, and then we're talking about the population, then that gave us somewhere close to five hundred to six hundred students, that's what I was looking for in terms of applying the three thousand to a five dollar, dividing by five dollars, so.
It's such a small.
It's such a small population.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Abstentions? Approved.
Thank you.
Now I want to move on for the approval of the Matthew Goldstein Scholarship Program for Students with Disabilities. Vice Chancellor Frank Sanchez will now provide an overview of the Matthew Goldstein Scholarship Program for Students with Disabilities.
Thank you, Chair Priscilli. This is a proposed resolution for the establishment of the Matthew Goldstein Scholarship Program for Students with Disabilities. Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York authorizes the establishment of the Matthew Goldstein Scholarship Program for Students with Disabilities, subject to financial ability to be awarded annually to qualified students who are otherwise eligible for TAP based upon financial need, but whose disabilities impact the rate of progress in order to support their persistence toward an achievement of undergraduate degrees. Explanation, Chancellor Matthew Goldstein's career at the University of New York is a testament to the core values of meaningful access and opportunity in higher education for all qualified students by extending affordable, excellent higher education opportunity to groups of students who have historically been underrepresented at CUNY. Chancellor Goldstein has been particularly devoted to access and opportunity for CUNY's more than nine thousand students with disabilities. He established CUNY's Annual Disability Awareness Month in two thousand and three, calling the community to dedicate each April to a celebration of the rich contributions that people with disabilities make to university life. Chancellor Goldstein has also shown his indefatigable support of the CUNY LEEDs Program, an intensive career readiness program that places CUNY students with disabilities in competitive employment at a rate of seventy percent within eighteen months of graduation. One of the major problems facing such students is that financial aid resources have been limited for many of them. There are approximately eight hundred CUNY students with disabilities who would be otherwise eligible for the New York State Tuition Assistance Program based upon their financial need, but are unable to attend college full-time because of the nature of their disabilities. Even with prevailing American with Disabilities Act TAP rate of progress considerations, these students often exhaust their TAP eligibility long before they are in a position to complete their degrees. Consequently, many of these students are not adequately making progress, re-completion are placed at risk of attrition. Providing financial support through tuition waivers in the Matthew Goldstein Scholarship Program for Students with Disabilities during this critical time will enable impacted students to finish their academic requirements and secure the degree which they have worked so hard to obtain. This is the proposed resolution for the establishment of the Matthew Goldstein Scholarship Program for Students with Disabilities.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
I'd like to move that.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
This is, this is just a wonderful program, and it's, I love how it's worded because it's, there's like a gap that it's filling, you know, and so there's clearly a need for it, and I'm just glad that we could, and the chancellor, you know, rising up to the occasion to bring this forward, I commend him for that.
I also want to piggyback on that and say, this is a great initiative. When I spoke to the chancellor regarding this initiative, I was very pleased that the chancellor is gonna actually be raising the fund himself to make sure that, you know, the program is funded and is gonna move forward for many, many years to come, because I believe the student disability deserve to have some peace of mind, because they have so many disabilities to deal with, they don't need to deal with the financial aspect of it as well, so anything that can be done to alleviate those is a good thing, so this is definitely a good initiative.
And as one who has been a mentor to the students with disabilities for the past fifteen years, I can't say anything, but this is a wonderfully noble cause, and it should be perpetuated for many, many, many generations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Abstentions? So approved. This is an information item now regarding the Vice Chancellor's report. Vice Chancellor Frank Sanchez will now address the committee.
A number of items to report out. Our Single Stop Centers continue to really provide exceptional service and support for our students in our community colleges. As many of you might recall, our Single Stop Centers provide eligible students with public benefits, tax refunds, and legal services. From two thousand and nine to two thousand and twelve, Single Stop and CUNY serve over thirty-one thousand families and individuals, connecting these students to over seventy-three million benefits, tax refunds, and other services. And just in the last year of two thousand and twelve alone, we provided students with over thirty-five million dollars in these benefits, and I just wanted to share that with this committee and also to recognize the hard-working staff at our, at our Single Stop Centers. They really are doing a tremendous service in supporting our students with these new services. On average, students who are eligible for services receive about two thousand more dollars benefits because of this new program, and so it's a, it really is doing some outstanding work. CUNY enrolls more than, as mentioned earlier, more than nine thousand students with disabilities, almost one quarter of all college students with disabilities in New York State. With the fastest-growing segments of this student population being students with learning disabilities, psychological disabilities, and those on the autism spectrum, we must maximize the impact of CUNY resources. To this end, the Central Office of Student Affairs is working with the Office of Institutional Research and Analysis and the University Budget Office to develop a rational, transparent, data-driven funding methodology that will allow critical funding to follow the student. On May tenth, the Central Office of Student Affairs held the Vice Chancellor's Excellence and Leadership Award Ceremony at the Borough Manhattan Community College. This year's ceremony offers our university community the opportunity to honor CUNY students who have displayed outstanding leadership within their respective colleges, communities, and the university through scholastic and service learning activities during the two thousand and twelve, thirteen academic year. Mahak Kapoor, a graduating senior from John Jay College of Criminal Justice, was named this year's Vice Chancellor Student of the Year. Just a little bit about Mahak, she actually presented to this board about a month or two ago on the fee proposal at John Jay, and she worked extremely hard with the administration to get this resolution passed after twenty-five years of unsuccessful attempts, and over and above her work as the SGA chair at John Jay, she has just, has done incredible service in her community and academically has excelled, and really is a great example of our very best at CUNY. And so congratulations to Mahak. On May sixteenth, the CUNY Athletic Conference hosted the twenty-seventh annual Michael Sternman Scholarship Athletes Awards Dinner at Queens College, highlighting CUNY's most accomplished scholar-athletes. The Scholar-Athletes of the Year are, at our senior colleges, Paul Dedewu, a City College of New York, men's indoor track and field and outdoor track and field, and Elisa Lubrino, Brutes College women's swimming and diving. At our community college, Vlasta Sarova, Kingsborough Community College, women's volleyball, and Anton Wesen- The Malave Leadership Academy's CUNY Core Program concluded its university-wide eyeglass recycling drive, New Eyes for the Needy. Over five hundred glasses were collected and will be recycled and sent to those in need and developing nations. The New York Blood Center held its annual recognition ceremony last month, and CUNY was recognized for being the New York City Employee Blood Program with the largest increase in donations over the previous year. On April twenty-sixth, the Central Office of Student Affairs sponsored a day-long training on the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, which is FERPA. At the CUNY Law School, more than a hundred student affairs professionals, administrators and college attorneys participated in a workshop facilitated by a federal expert on FERPA law. And then finally, while she's not here, I wanted to really convey appreciation for the leadership and work of President Perugi. She has been not only the chair of the Council of Presidents, Student Affairs and Special Programs, but obviously a member on the Board of Trustees of Student Affairs and Special Programs, but she has been a great guide and support, and a real champion and advocate for putting students first in our service for them, and she'll certainly be missed in her support and advocacy, and I just, that this will be her last meeting with us.
Yes. Thank you very much.
That concludes my report.
Do we have any comments? Any questions?
Good report.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Sanchez. The Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs will now go into executive session to consider student disciplinary appeals. Because the college disciplinary hearing in this case was not open to the public, this session will be closed as well. May I have a motion?
So move, Madam Chair.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
The committee now moves to executive session. Now adjourned, and we will now return to public session for adjournment of the meeting. Anyone available to come back in? No one out there? Anyone in there? There's nobody, there's nobody outside?
No, just, just.
You want a motion?
May I have a motion, please, to adjourn?
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourned.